Doing with my computer and I couldn't figure out why. And like, why is my video not working? I wanted, I was just like, I had my computer closed. How's everybody doing?
Good. How are you?
Good. Linda, I think you're on mute.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. Sorry, I just pulled into the garage. I just got home, so I'm going to stop video and I'll put it back on in just a minute. As I get back into the house.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Jack talking, but he's muted. Oh, there he is.
I got him. You're welcome.
I saw you talking, Jack, but we couldn't hear you.
I figured you'd unmute me somehow here. I have 39% on this and I don't know how long we're gonna go tonight. See how it goes.
It'd go fast.
I did go up to that Madison Avenue. It's unbelievable, that McInnity Bakery.
Thank you, Jack.
Wow, what a beautiful job. I swear, I was over there two weeks ago and they hadn't done anything. And it just, all of a sudden, it's beautiful.
No, no, we, you know, because when we took out the front, we had to get the glass in right away. We couldn't leave it just exposed or open.
Yeah.
So it was, we got that one day to do it and it was, yeah, well, we uncovered more and more historic fabric. You know, we went beyond what Dan Sanders had prescribed, once we started finding that stuff. And then I'm so proud and everyone's proud and happy.
Yeah.
All the boys are excited about it. It was a great project. I think it's fantastic and, you know, I'm glad you feel the same way. Did want to make you happy.
Yes, indeed.
I really, that was part of it. We're gonna please Jack.
Lisa Rodriguez just emailed me and said she's trying to get on, but might be having difficulty. I just sent her the link that was in the.
I can, let's see. I just re-sent her the link.
Oh, thank you.
Now, are we into stage four of the COVID now?
Albany is, or just about entering stage four.
Yeah, Albany entered today.
Is any reward, like having a regular meeting in two weeks?
Once we hear from the governor and when public meetings can be, can resume. I was, um, the planning department has gone back on a part-time rotation. But we're only allowed to have so many people in the office.
Yeah.
The executive order that suspends the open meetings law is only actually in place until July 6th, I believe, at this point. So, I mean, we'll have to wait and see if it's extended again. I think it's fairly likely that it will be.
So it looks like we're just waiting on Lisa. So hopefully.
Lisa's the principal presenter today, so we gotta get Lisa here.
Right.
You don't want me presenting your architectural drawing?
Dan, you can do it.
Yeah.
If I listen long enough, maybe we'll get it. While we're waiting, I wonder what happened to that Lexington Avenue. It was rather handsome building, right in the middle of two others. And it was torn down, was there, in back of the church on the West Hill side on Lexington Avenue.
Going towards Central or?
No, no, going in between First and, First and Clinton. Beautiful building. I assume it's something, something happened there because the first I heard of it, it was boarded up, I believe.
Well, two came down on Lexington.
I'll have to look and see if I have something for that section of Lexington because I just received notification, I haven't received reports yet, but of the two on Lexington Avenue near Rolfs, that came down as emergency demolitions and they're land bank owned.
Yeah, I don't think this is one of those.
Okay.
I think these, I think these were land bank though. I heard from Tara McCray about it and I think these, I thought these were land bank.
Okay.
Historic Albany knows, Erin, because I communicated.
The ones near Rolfs were definitely land bank owned, but the one that Jack was asking about is on the other side of Lexington. First, and I, I don't know. I'll have to look into that.
Oh, okay. The pictures that Pam sent, I thought they, I thought these were on the other side of Lexington too. These are, these are like handsome big row houses. I can't think.
Pretty elegant looking building in the work.
Yeah.
Two between three from the picture that I saw. I think Lisa's on. She's muted though.
All right, give me one.
Yes, I'm here now, sorry.
Thank you. You gotta, you gotta take this one because they almost, they almost got me to make the present.
Okay. Um, so I don't know what you're, what you're looking at. Should I start describing the changes we made?
Nope, well.
Start the meeting first.
We've been waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting, Zoom meeting of the City of Albany Historic Resources Commission. I'm John Myers, Chair, and in attendance this evening, if you will indicate your presence, Jack McInnity.
Here, present.
Marilyn Kaplan.
Here.
Chris Hacker.
Here.
Has Erin shown up? Erin Tobin?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I was the one who was talking about those buildings on Lexington that Jack mentioned.
I'm sorry.
I had my video off for a little while.
Yeah, your, your picture disappeared, so.
Yeah.
And Marilyn Kaplan, did I call you? All right.
It's been a long day, John, huh?
It has been a long day. All right, we have a quorum. So we can move on with our business of the evening. We have two items on the agenda. If there are people that have signed up for public comment, you know, there will be time after we've deliberated to offer your comments. We just request that you limit those comments, the three minutes in duration. And the first item on the agenda is the Clinton, or, you know, 236 Clinton Avenue. And this is a return visit. This is a concept review since the planning board has to take action on this property before we make recommendations or a motion to approve the concept. So if someone is available to discuss the changes that have been made.
This is Dan Hirschberg. I'm gonna describe the changes by turning it over to Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Rodriguez here. Okay, so we took your input and I assume you have a copy of our revised elevation in front of you.
Yeah.
I'm only seeing you guys. I'm not seeing, oh, there it is. Yes. So we, and again, this is a concept thing. We're willing to keep, you know, getting feedback, but we need for our grant application to at least say that, you know, we've gotten to a certain level of approval. So I think since our last meeting, we have broken up the facade by modulating it four inches in a couple of areas. So going from left to right, the first section is, let's call that the, a consistent plane. The second section with the ace's entrance pops out four inches. Then it goes back four inches and then it's comes out four inches. And then it goes back with pilesters on either side. And then the far section on the right is in the plane of the rear. So it goes back and forth a little bit.
One thing I might, one thing I might add, Lisa, is you also reduced the height of the building.
Took a foot out of the height of the building. I took a foot out of the first floor. And we added some bay windows and we changed up the cornice so it varied on the different sections. We took away the cast stone base and we, what else? Changed up the windows a little bit. So we tried to break it up so the rhythm matched more of the neighborhood, included the side buildings so you could see them, see it in context with the two side buildings. Yeah. So, do you have any questions or you think we're going in the direction that you're looking for here?
Well, I certainly think, you know, it's going in the direction is very responsive to the comments that were offered at the previous meeting. I guess a couple areas, I'm, I'm interested in the the window configuration because I thought somewhere it indicated that they were double hung, but they appear to be a somewhat different operation.
Yeah, the ones on the sides and rear are double hung and these are casement windows.
Okay.
I don't, I don't remember you commenting on that last time. I'm willing to make changes to the windows, trying to give it sort of a modern feel. It's certainly not an exciting building. It's just trying to fit in and not look like we're trying to copy old construction.
No, and quite frankly, I think, you know, having a somewhat contemporary window is not an inappropriate thing. The proportion of the opening seems about right. The other item that, the continuity of the storefront and its lack of relationship to the, whatever the, the fenestration is above, seems a little out of place. And I just was wondering if you had further explanation of what was.
Yeah, so I did bring the masonry down to the ramp level there. So before the storefront was continuous all the way across for the three storefronts. And now I brought the masonry down to help make it seem like three different sections of the building.
I, I'm not comfortable with the, the long horizontal element of glass. I don't know whether I'm looking at one big supermarket or whether I'm looking at three individual shops. And I wonder if the left and right of each of the three individual buildings, because we have an appearance that makes it look like three buildings, if they shouldn't be a little wider with masonry left and right, to have more of an individual character to each one of those units. If it's going to go with everybody else on Clinton Avenue, nobody wants it to look like it's a carbon, carbon copy. But what happens is it looks like one long horizontal building like you would do for a supermarket or something like that. It has no intimacy to it that if it looked like three windowed buildings, I think it'd be more comfortable, even in the middle one where there's very little masonry between the edge and the building, that's even extra wide. It's, it's a real effort to make sure that those windows go much wider than the buildings above them. I'd be more comfortable if there was more of an identity for one, two, and three by having increased masonry to the left and right of each of those buildings. What, what is behind it? Is it one big office or one big?
No, actually, it's the main entrance to the incubator center. There was one large storefront and three small storefronts.
Well, I think all the more reason that I, I think I'd be more comfortable to see more masonry to the left and right of each one of those, each one of those buildings, or each, each one of those storefronts.
So Jack, the masonry is why widest, it looks like, at the far left of our left building. And then, I'm not sure it's equal on the right side of that building and then it's narrower.
Yeah, it's, it's very narrow on the
Yes.
numbers two and three.
Yes.
I'd like to see all of them a little bit, a lot wider, in the case of the real skinny ones. And maybe slightly wider on the, on the one that's on the, on the east side, on the left side.
Okay.
Okay, that's easy enough.
I have a question. I opened, I think later on, I've got in my laptop probably the earlier content. But we have information now on the buildings, the actual photos you gave, but I don't really understand the, the heights and the relative heights and there, and I also lost track of the conversation about what we might have said before of heights and why you dropped them down. So apologies on that. But it's not to scale, I guess is really my, my point. And so it's good to see what the adjacent buildings are, but it feels like it's insufficient information to understand the relationship of the proposed construction to the existing buildings at both ends.
The first, the first, not to interrupt, on the first floor, it almost looks like the first floor was squashed by the second and third floor. If you look particularly away from the storefronts, it, it's not quite a basement level in the one that doesn't show a door. But it looks like they were, and I think you did mention it was dropped by a foot.
Yes.
I, I think it, it's a detriment in style.
Okay.
You like to think that the first floor is the tallest in virtually everything.
Yeah.
I could put the foot back there and take the foot out of the third floor. I just, I read the HCR guidelines again and they said, it used to say nine foot ceiling height required, and I see that now. It says nine foot maximum. So I think I can take a foot out of the third floor and I can put it back on the first floor, which makes the large spaces on the first floor a little bit more comfortable.
I would suggest that those prescriptive numbers are interesting to keep in the background of the discussion, but it would be most appropriate to understand the elevations of the sidewalk, the elevations of the first floor levels and the second and the third on both the adjacent buildings and your proposal.
I will also bring up the way in which the historic resource overlay guidelines for new construction are written. I had reached out to Lisa at one point with concerns about the height of the building previously. The review criteria for new construction requires that new buildings should not be taller than or shorter than the tallest or shortest building on the block face. So, um, you know, they should be compatible in height. And.
But bearing in mind that it's on a hill.
Right.
Right.
But, you know, Marilyn had brought up, you know, the point of scaling. But it should still be no taller than the tallest building or shorter than the shortest building. Okay, and I took those photos off of Google Earth and I did, you know, as much as you can with a photo. I made it the correct width, as far as I know. I drew the width and then placed it there. And I tried to get the height, you know, without changing the proportions of the building. The proportions of the existing buildings look correct to me. And I measured to the height of the billboard. I didn't have a way to get to the height of the actual cornice of the existing building, but I did measure that billboard. So I was endeavoring to get them to scale compared to our building.
So what does that say about the, we'll use cornice height as the relative, the, the element here. So at the left end, the photo, is that building a couple of feet shorter than the newest building, that, that end of the construction?
I believe so. I believe so, yes.
And then vice versa at the other end?
Yes.
I think if we could get, I, I think it'd be really helpful to have those correctly drawn, just for you to check them again. Because it doesn't, there's something about it that doesn't quite feel right to me. The scale feels awkward. I like a lot of the changes that have occurred, but these are, even the photos that we've got there, they're primary, they're taller than they are wider buildings and yet our buildings are much squatter.
Maybe because ours are wider. So the, my unit is wider for the, for the breaking up into verticals. It's not 23 feet wide.
Understood, understood. And I think that the, I, I kind of need the information about grade, the first floor levels relative and the cornice level. And in context so that we understand the hill, that would be really helpful for me. And, and then I guess the only other comment in terms of having a series of a facade that suggests a series of separate buildings, the, the component that's second in from the right appears to be the most successful in communicating a vertical.
Even that is a little bit short.
I think so. I'm waiting, again, I'm, I
Yeah.
I think we need the elevation so that we can, you know, finish the discussion.
I don't know if I'm looking at the same thing because I've got everybody's face on the right-hand side. Are we looking at essentially the equivalent of six buildings? Or is there something under, underneath everybody's head that I don't know about?
Nope, that's it.
We can refer to them for, for discussion purposes as one, two, three, four, five, and six.
Yeah.
Number four looks like it's the back of something else.
Yeah.
It, it's the, the real step, stepchild of the, of the group. It has no, one, it's, it's too short on the bottom, which makes it look overly utilitarian, like maybe it's a parking garage from the other side. And it has that split in its one, two, number three, you have the two skinny windows and down below you go to one of the, one of the the four that are identical. Is there anything we can do to make it look like it's an important building instead of a, an afterthought? Can we give it some kind of an entrance even if the door doesn't open? Or?
That's possible.
So that it looks like it's a, a building in its own right and not a part of a building left or right, or it's the back of something that we're not looking at.
Okay. I think there's an office in there that could have a door to the exterior. It is a little difficult because the first floors, the first floor doesn't have a lot of relationship to what goes on above.
Yeah.
These are arbitrary divisions, you know, trying to arbitrarily divide it into something that isn't going on inside.
Yeah.
And there's two different things already going on on the first and second floor. And now I'm trying to make things go on superimposed across it as well.
Yeah, it, it, it looks like they have a totally different use, which is obviously the, the fact that the upper floors, second and third floor, they're fine. And then down below, it's, it needs something to give it a sense of identity as a decent, important building.
Okay.
I wonder if dropping the sill of the windows down so that they, you know, are a little longer and look less like square utility windows would help.
Like I, like I did with number six.
Yeah, number five and six. Both bring their windows as far down as they can. I agree. And it looks good.
Floor does look a little squished, particularly in number five, when that, the base for the projected windows seems to be crushing the entry door. That, that could use a, a little more generous treatment there.
It sounds like to make this building look better, we probably shouldn't have taken a foot out of the first floor. Yeah. I think we should probably put it back, have Lisa put it back in. And if necessary, adjust the third floor. But again, it appears like most of the commons have to do with the proportion of that first floor versus the grade that crosses it at an angle and, and pushes everything up against the bottom of the windows.
Yeah.
I think so, Dan. Yeah.
And Marilyn, are you? And Marilyn, are you asking that I draw the two adjacent buildings to scale rather than use the photos?
Or somehow, you know, confirm specific dimensions and elevations of grade, first floor, the floor levels, the top of the cornice. So whatever is, you know, whatever's workable for you. But they just, I'm not convinced that that's really what it is from what you've been able to scale from photos.
No, I measured on, I was out on site and I measured the stoop, the stoops of the building on the left and the height of the billboard. And for the building on the right, I measured the sill height and the window height. So I know it doesn't seem right, but I'm fairly confident of.
Well, then maybe just, yeah, maybe checking it. What's the distance approximately between the building on, the existing building on the left and the new building one? And then the same existing building six and?
Yeah, those are supposed to be the same. Yeah, those are supposed to be the same. There's 10 feet between our building and each side building.
I can't see number six. Does it have a door? Because all the little faces are?
No, it has a door, actually to the gangway it has a door.
But it doesn't have one on Clinton Avenue?
No. But I could move it to Clinton Avenue.
I don't know because I can't, the only thing I can see is the five heads that are there, that are there, that are covering. Is there any way we can move this to the left?
You know, Jack, if you grab, if you use your little cursor, you can grab, you can grab that gallery screen and move it down.
Also, if you hover over it, it'll come up with, there's like six little squares for grids, then two stacked, then one, and then a really narrow line. And if you do the narrow line, it'll pull everybody up and you can see the screen.
Okay, well, I'm not going to do that right now because something's going to go wrong and Jan's upstairs.
Well, so I think you have great comments and I wish I had thought of them when I was making the changes so that we wouldn't have so many comments. But I'm happy to make them. I think they're good suggestions and we'll improve it. And Dan knows more about what approvals we're trying to get, but I'm hoping that, you know, we'll leave today's meeting with enough of an approval to move that other process forward. This one is ongoing, obviously, and these aren't construction drawings. This is just a drawing to get the funding. And, you know, no detailing is done. And a lot more development will go into it once the project is funded. And I certainly will be incorporating your comments and to improve it.
This is somewhat bifurcated here because we're in an approval status for our loan. Yet they want us, they want to show that we have municipal approval or the capability of getting municipal approval sign-offs. Yet we're not prepared, I don't think, on behalf of the applicant to bring these to the full completed drawings yet because the funds aren't available. The funds are contingent upon the funding mechanism. So that's sort of the problem that Lisa has in here. I guess we can make these changes. I think part of the problem is the visual thing of the building on the right with the, it's different because of the tree hiding a lot of the frontage. You know, it's not, it's not on a plane with the, with the rest of the stuff. But maybe, maybe we can, I can have my survey people go out and give Lisa the dimensions, the upper floors if we have to, so she can be certain that we got it to scale.
That'd be great.
Would a, actually, let me say one more thing about the drawings. When, when they do come back, I think it would be helpful to have a larger site plan because the drawings we have now just kind of go right up to the end of this property. So it's kind of hard to understand that 10-foot distance that you just described, Liza, between the new building and existing. So a larger context would be helpful. Would a, would it be useful or necessary to have or sufficient to have a letter of preliminary concept approval provided that X, Y, and Z? Is that useful?
Yeah, that sort of concept approval, I think, would satisfy, would go a long way to satisfying the client's need to pursue the applicant funds. Again, we hope to get site plan approval from the planning board, maybe by July 20th, subject to whatever further decision the HRC has to make with certificate of appropriateness. But again, our goal here would be come with some conceptual feeling from, from the board as to where we go. And if we have to come back in a couple of weeks and come back again to show you, we're willing to do that. But our goal here would be able to have something. I know you don't really have a concept approval state, status for a thing, but if we could have something that equates to a normal concept approval that the HRC is satisfied that the concept works, subject to details or something like that.
If I could ask, where are the funds that you're applying for coming from?
This would be a HCR 9% application.
So where do you submit the application?
Homes and community renewal.
Homes and community renewal.
Estate, it's a state.
New York State HCR.
Yep.
I'm not sure that the Historic Resources Commission has the authority to give a preliminary concept approval, but I will, I will look into it and see what I can figure out for that.
I think we've done it before.
Yeah, we've
Right, wrong, or otherwise, Erin. You've given
Have wise counsel, but we went ahead and did it on numerous occasions.
Yeah, well, you've given recommendations since I've been here for concept, concept reviews, but there's never been a vote or any official, like, approvals or anything like that. Some of the votes you've taken before have been at a public hearing on an official application, but we've never given actual, like, concept approval on any concept reviews you've been doing since I've been here at least.
I'll take a look at some cases, see if I can, you know, sort this out in New York State law.
When would be the next time we could come back?
Well, planning board has to take official action. So once the planning board has reviewed and taken official action on the project, then you can come back with a final submission to Historic Resource Commission for approvals and a certificate of appropriateness. But we are not allowed to take action until the planning board has done so first. And that's due to, that's due to the seeker review process. So.
So do you tell the planning board that you're, that the proposal is okay with you with stipulations or just that it's okay with you?
We're not, we're not taking any motions. So we'll let them know that we've, that HRC has reviewed it for concept and made recommendations, but, you know, no official, no official action has been taken. So.
So, okay, so it doesn't stop planning. Planning's fine. It's going to
No, they're completely, you're going through two separate reviews currently. Planning board and Historic Resource Commission are separate, but because of the seeker review for the project, the way that that works is that the lead agency, which is planning board, has to finish their review process and take action before any other land use reviews can take action.
Historic impacts are taken into account during the seeker process, though. So, you know, to the extent that the board wants to provide information to the planning board, that's certainly allowable.
Let me ask the question, I wasn't really following the calendaring of that, but would it be useful to have anything from the HRC, even if it's a letter that, you know, does you no good except to say that you've been consulting with us? Is that useful prior to whatever you're going on with HCR right now? And that's question number one. Would it, is it important to you? Would it be useful? And then I guess the next question would be to Erin and Amy. Is there any reason we wouldn't just be able to write a letter thanking you for coming and we're pleased to see the changes and we look forward to keep working with you?
If I could step in there for a second, would it suffice for your funding purposes if HRC provided that type of letter to the planning board in which HRC lays out the historic impacts and whether or not they feel that those impacts will be substantial and adverse for seeker purposes?
Only if you think they're going to be. It's not going to be adverse.
It's a good letter, but if HRC, you know, if they, if they do a review and they find, you know, that the historic impacts are either not substantial or not substantially adverse, or that they're mitigated, and that's what they want to advise the planning board for at seeker review, is that type of letter something that would help you guys?
I think it would help because it's sort of like when we got SHIP-O involved. SHIP-O does a no effect letter or no impact letter. And here the HRC is sort of in the same position here.
It is.
To give us that advice on historical impacts.
Right, that makes sense. So we're not, we don't, haven't settled all the details yet, but you're confident that it's not going to have an adverse impact, right? We're going to get there.
You guys need to review the historic impacts and decide that.
Well, I don't think we're ready to do that. I mean, I don't, I think that, I was trying to say is something that's much more open-ended, useful at this moment. I think that some of the information about the specific elevations and the scale and the things that we've been talking about, you know, we want to have, continue to have conversations about that. The question in my mind was really, is just a open, just, just a general letter saying, we're happy we met with you. We like the project. Keep coming back. Is that important or useful without anything of substance in it?
I think it would be as opposed to not having anything and going to the planning board on, hopefully in July, and we could say we've met with HRC. I think this is our second time and we have some comments that were brought up and we're making changes. And just to let the planning board know if we were approved tonight, we would all, we'd be going back to the HRC for another review. And, but here's a letter supporting where we are. I think, I think that would be great.
Well, let me ask you a question a little different than Erin. You probably give them that information anyway internally, right?
We provide the, the meeting disposition, meeting minutes with the HRC's recommendations. So all of that is provided. But we don't provide like a support letter or anything like that. It's just meeting minutes.
So you won't be going back to HCR prior to the planning board process being completed or the next step?
Correct. Our application for HCR will most likely be submitted sometime in August, I believe. If, at the earliest, there's, there's an RFP that is supposed to be coming out any minute. And then that'll provide us with the dates of submission, allowable submission dates.
And originally it was supposed to be, the application date was supposed to be July.
Right.
And that's back.
Right.
Yeah, it's been bumped a couple of times now.
If the application is going back before the planning board in July, do you know what the date is in August that the HCR applications have to be in by? Do you know what that date is?
We don't yet, but we're hoping to know. As soon as the RFP comes out, that'll include the date. So we're hoping to know that date.
Because there is, I believe that the, the July planning board meetings are, there's a workshop on July 14th. And I believe the meeting, the public hearing is on July 28th. There's an HRC, Historic Resource Commission meeting on August 5th and August 19th. So, you know, for funding purposes, you may be able to get back in front of the Historic Resource Commission for that first August meeting. You know, if you have, if everything's looking like it'll go through the planning board. You know, it might be.
Yeah, we'll, we'll aim to have new drawings before that, yeah, so for August.
Well, then, as it relates to assembly of the minutes for this meeting, I think the, the observations can be.
He froze them.
Everyone else is moving except John.
Summarized.
Oh, John, you were frozen. Can you repeat yourself?
No, I'm sorry. I got a note that my internet connection is unstable. Somebody must be using it. Now, we could, obviously, the minutes can reflect the discussions that we've had. We've had two meetings with the applicant discussing the details and the impact on the neighborhood of the project that we are satisfied that the project is headed in a very positive direction and there are enumerated suggestions from this meeting and that we look forward to the, the next application after the planning board has made their determination and we're allowed to finalize our action.
Nicely done.
I think that would be helpful for the planning board, too.
Yeah, I think the dialogue between the boards is important, too. And we're offering this, you know, we've looked at it twice. So this is our, our measured opinion that, you know, we're, you know, it's not having an adverse impact on the neighborhood. There are some detail issues that we'd like to work with the applicant to resolve. But overall, the project is headed in a very positive direction.
Seeker is intended to be, you know, a collaborative process. And so your input, like I said, will be helpful, I think, to the planning board. You also don't need to make, you know, a final decision to give your input to the planning board. So if you want to communicate that in a letter or in the minutes, that would be fine.
So that would be appreciated, for sure.
I'm sorry, what?
That would be appreciated by the team, for sure.
Well, I guess the summary then, Erin, for the, the suggestions being made, one is reconcile the, the existing buildings' scale at each end of the block here so that a judgment can be, an informed judgment can be made. And that we're recommending that the first story height, floor to second, or first floor to second floor height be increased by a foot. And that to maintain the overall height, that the, the additional height can be taken out of the, a portion of it can be taken out of the top. the additional height can be taken out of the, a portion of it can be taken out of the top story. And that buildings one, two, and three, we recommend increasing the masonry pilaster at each end of the storefront blocks be increased to the point where there is a greater definition of separation between and breaking up the continuity of the storefront. And also building number four, we were suggesting, you know, dropping those windows down to the water table to uh increase the the presence of the fertile of that building or that portion of the building. So I'll leave it open to the rest of the commissioners to add whatever additional comments that I probably have missed or misquoted.
I can add a couple that I remember. Add more glass under the bays in building five or module five. And um, so it doesn't look so top-heavy. And uh, we could move the door from around the uh west side onto the front of the building and module six.
Okay.
And add a door to module four.
Or I think it's add a door or at one point it was a discussion of instead of a door, just dropping those still, dropping the cells.
All the windows.
Yeah.
The windows, so, yep. And uh make the storefronts more intimate looking.
Valued judgment.
I have a feeling, I said that also on your one, two, three, module four.
Yeah.
That I have a feeling that if you were able to add a vertical brick recess even kind of below the cornice, I'm not, I'm not sure how you handle it. But if you could get a shadow line, you know, a real shadow line in there by something that recedes or pops out, it might proportionally help that, which is the squattest, square.
Right.
Squattest. Without doing any other major changes there vis a vis making it one, two, three, seven modules, you know, short of making seven modules or something like that.
Right.
Okay, I, I think they're all great suggestions.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck at the planning board.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
We will, we'll zoom Bob, more meeting and offer comment.
Have a good day.
Thank you. The next item to of new, oh, I guess, do we have any public comments?
Let's see. I don't have anything. Kara, do you have any comments?
No, we commented before how much we were thrilled to see this project happening with new construction filling a gap um on Clinton Avenue. Appropriate infill is one of our big um pushes this year for advocacy and we're absolutely thrilled to see this project happen. Right?
Good.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, and I'll move on to the next item of business in our public meeting. That's um twenty-five Delaware Avenue, we reviewed at our last meeting. And the action we need to take this evening is to declare, well, first discuss and then declare that lead agency for the seeker process um would be in the realm of the planning board. Is that correct, Erin?
Yes, so um twenty-five Delaware, which you've seen the concept review for um twice now for the new resist, oh, excuse me, for the redesign, um the planning board has circulated um their uh lead agency agreement um that they will serve as lead agency for the um seeker environmental review.
So you guys don't need to vote on consenting to that? You would only need to vote if you feel the desire to challenge um the lead agency determination. But if you're okay with the planning, we're doing it. There's no need for a vote on that.
Okay, I'll poll the commission then. Is there anyone that is opposed to the planning board assuming lead agency role? Okay, hearing none, I will assume we are comfortable with that position. Is there anything else to come before the commission or do any of the commissioners have any points that they would like to raise?
Any follow-up on the removal of the Skylar statue?
I have not gotten any follow-up on where it is in the process um or what's happening with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I have not heard anything either.
What are you hoping to get, Jack? What's uh, what's your goal there? What you want to know?
I, I think um I think before anything happens to it, we want to make sure that uh the public knows and has a number of veterans groups are upset by this historic groups, a number of them. I've gotten no uh really uh positive information on it. It's usually quite negative. And uh people are worried about uh, this is another, this is the same uh this is the same uh sculpture that did Moses in Washington Park. Jay, John Massey Rhine. And uh it's an important artifact in its own right. And people would like to know what's going on and if in fact, somebody does have the authority to just move it somewhere. What's the procedure and can people make a comment? Whether it's the Revolutionary War people or it's the people who are concerned uh for other reasons. Are people that uh are shocked that the uh anti uh the anti-slavery group was uh something that was founded and run by uh Skylar's uh, uh son-in-law? It seems unlikely that that would be the target to remove it because he inherited slaves at, at birth and continued to have them. Uh, but ultimately is listed as one of the people who wanted to end slavery after the American Revolution.
I guess my question, why I ask you the question is um, one, are we trying to figure out procedurally how we all fit in? And separate from that is, I think, probably a pretty important and no doubt a very interesting conversation amongst ourselves because it's a complicated topic with lots of uh, lots of factors.
Yeah.
So I guess question one, I, I guess question three is even if we don't have a role, is it a topic that we collectively want to uh have a conversation on amongst ourselves?
I don't know about amongst ourselves as much as uh the whole community was something that important. There should be a public hearing somewhere, whether we are individually approached or whether as individuals, we go to a public hearing and, and give our opinion. I, I'd like to know what the procedure is.
So the first question is
And when would that happen, especially in this uh COVID world that uh we can't get more than three people to attend on Zoom as a, as an observer? So at some point, the public ought to be able to come and say pros and cons and, and what should happen to the statue? Should it be, should somebody have the authority to move it? It needs a public uh process.
So that's the, that's question number one is what is the process? Okay. Okay. Um Erin, I have a, if we can, are we, anything more on that? I have another.
No, it's, I mean, if you have new.
No, no, no. I sent you some comments on twenty-five um Delaware. So I don't know if anybody else received comments and or if those, what you did with them or any discussion or whatever.
So yourself, Chris and Lee all sent comments. I was telling Chris at the beginning of the meeting, um, we, um, I compiled everything together um and sent it all to um, sent it all to Conifer. A number of the comments were all very similar, um, you know, asking them to kind of, um, asking them to address the roof treatment, masonry treatment and um the window recesses on the basement. So um it was at least a two-page list of comments that I sent to them. Um, and I think that they were all fairly constructive and very helpful. So
That's great.
Hopefully we'll get, um, we'll see them incorporated into the next, um, well, into hopefully their, their final submission. So, um.
That's great. I have a question, a, a comment question, or I don't know if Chris or Lee or anybody else had it as well. Um. When I looked at whatever that specific wording was about the copper roof and I asked you because it said, it did not say replace copper roof with new copper standing seam roof. So I checked it because I thought I had heard it was a cop, a new copper standing seam roof that was going up. And then when I asked you, you confirmed that. And that was kind of interesting to me because one, it's probably one of the most important features of the building and we should be congratulating them for doing that. But the other part of that was, wow, really? I mean, that's a expensive uh effort that I was pretty surprised was incorporated in, into the project.
You, you had asked about um, you know, what they were replacing it with and to confirm that it was, you know, copper standing seam with copper standing seam. Um, and Chris and Lee both asked whether or not the existing roof was in a condition that warranted replacement. So whether it's something that they can keep or what, you know, pretty much asking like, can they confirm what the condition of the, the roof is? So but
Well, either way, it's a great roof.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So congratulations. If you had anything to do with telling them it was important.
I was impressed with the copper welded flashing around the windows. Treatment encasements. I, I was taken by that. I do hope to see them return the windows to the, the basement level, the ground level.
I think they can make it work. They got great, they got enough grade there to
Even the scale of that project, I, I think it would be a miss if they weren't
Yeah.
brought them back.
Um, I do have, um, Erin Tobin brought this to mine and John's attention um a week ago, and I know that some of you are aware of it, um, fifty-two North Pearl Street. If you haven't been by, um, it had been before the HRC in twenty eighteen um for I think at least three iterations of their proposal. They have, oh, we lost John. They have deviated from their approved scope of work. If you haven't been by, they have completely um cited the front storefront area. Um, they will be coming into the office to meet with myself and other members of the planning department and the building department to discuss getting that proposal back on track. Um, we have issued a stop work order for, and we're holding all building permits for that property currently. But they may be back before the Historic Resource Commission. If they don't agree to reverse the work that they've done. So.
What would they do if they came back if they weren't agreeing to reverse the work they had done? Are they
They would, if they weren't going to go back and reverse the work um and meet the approved plans, they could come back to apply to the HRC to retain the existing storefront. I hope you all um would make, uh, wouldn't allow that. But um, so that would be what they would be coming back for. And it would be up to the HRC to either deny or approve that application. But they would have to make that case um and provide evidence as to why they would want to keep it. Or why they, why they didn't adhere to the approved plans to begin with.
There is a hardship provision in the certificate of appropriateness sections. But um in a case like this, mostly, most often you would say that this is um a self-created hardship. So it's, it's not the type of thing that they can bring to you guys and say, you know, it's just not fair that you make us comply with these historic things. Yeah, this is kind of a, a classic self-created hardship when, you know, um, an applicant goes against a permit that they already have.
So, and I did, um, I did reach out to the building department and I did I did receive the permit set that was submitted and was approved. And it did match what was approved by the Historic Resource Commission. So um, you know, we do have standing to be able to you know, either require that they reverse it or, you know, they don't really have any evidence to support a self-created hardship. So.
Who's the owner slash developer?
Um, it's Chris Pratt and um his business partner, George Mahoney are um are the LLC that owns the property. So, and they have that, they had the fifty, fifty-two North Pearl Street and fifty-four North Pearl Street, which they had brought to before the HRC together.
Have they offered any explanation as to what happened?
Not, not yet. So yeah, but I've been getting a lot of inquiries about it. So I, I did want to just bring it to the HRC's attention and let you know that we are um moving forward with it.
Thank you, Erin. Good work.
Yes.
So far, it's been the only one since COVID, so knock on wood.
All right, are there any other items to come before the commission? I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there are no items.
So move.
Second?
Oh, second.
All right, all those in favor? Turn off your Zoom feed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy Fourth.
Bye.
Yes.
Have fun. Um, I was gonna tell you, I'm really obsessed with this.